Good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for coming to this public information session about the special town meeting board article pertaining to Minuteman and specifically the proposed amended regional agreement. There's a lot of complicated information behind the agreement. The agreement itself may seem to be fairly straightforward, but it's important for you to understand some of the context for it, so that's what we're here and we'll field questions afterwards. I should introduce, aside from me, I'm Janet Adachi. I'm a member of the Acton Board of Selectmen, and I'm also the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Minuteman Regional School. In the audience here, out of camera range, is Pam Norris, who is Acton's representative on the Minuteman School Committee, and we also are honored to have Superintendent Ed Brupulin in the audience, who will handle the really difficult questions when the time comes. So, let us get started. This is just a roadmap to explain what we're going to be covering, so that you know when the presentation is coming to an end. First, what is Minuteman? What is the regional agreement? How will the regional agreement change? Why now? What is the impact on Acton? Recent trends, that's some additional information that may or may not be in the special town meeting presentation, but I just thought it would be information that you might be interested in seeing. And then finally, next steps. The what is Minuteman? Minuteman Regional District was established in 1970, and the high school, as many of you know, is located in Lexington. There are currently 16 member towns in the Regional District, including Acton, and each member town pays an annual assessment, much like towns in Acton, Boxborough, School District pay an assessment. And finally, the regional agreement is a governing document for the Regional District. The curriculum, which some people may or may not be familiar with, includes pretty rigorous academic courses, as well as high-quality career and technical education courses. The academic courses include advanced placement courses, and then there are 16 career majors providing industry-supported career and technical education. Students have to pass the MCAS exam, and 65 percent of the graduates actually go on to college, which is something that I'm not sure most people understand. And finally, the other 35 percent go on to careers. The regional agreement, as I said before, is a governing document for the Regional District. It created the Regional District in 1970. It's been revised three times. There was an attempted fourth amendment in 2014, which didn't take effect because it required unanimous approval of all 16 towns, and only 10 member towns, including Acton, actually voted in their town meetings to approve it. The new proposed agreement, which you will be addressing at special town meeting, includes the changes that were proposed in 2014, plus additional changes that were recommended in December of last year by a working group of selectmen from all the member towns, and I represented Acton in those discussions. Minuteman School Committee recommended all of the changes, the 2014 changes, plus the new ones in December, at its meeting on December 21st. So, the 2014 proposals, and there are a lot of changes, but these were the really important ones. There would be a four-year enrollment-based rolling average for the calculation of capital in operating assessments. There would be enrollment-based weighted voting on the school committee, which works to the advantage of somewhat larger enrollment towns like Acton, because currently it's one-town, one-vote arrangement. There would be a simpler process for member town withdrawal, which the current provisions for withdrawal are rather cumbersome, which is why this became a big issue for some towns that I think would like to withdraw. The capital contribution calculation, which I won't go into the details of, includes a member town wealth factor, which also works to Acton's advantage. And finally, there are certain amendments that are allowed by less than a unanimous member town approval. The really big ones, like amending the agreement and such, still require approval of all towns. The 2016 additions to the proposed amendments, these are the highlights of the changes. They reduce the minimum capital cost charge from a five-student minimum to one-student minimum. This affects really the small enrollment towns like Weston and Boxborough and Dover. Whether they, however many students they have, even if they have one student enrolled, they still pay as if they have five students enrolled. And so, some of them are, may appreciate this change enough, maybe they'll stay in the district. There is now a new requirement to have non-member communities pay an equitable share of capital costs at present. Non-member communities who send their students to Minuteman, and there are quite a number of don't, aren't obligated to pay, contribute to capital, which has been a source of irritation for, I think, all of the member towns, who bear the full burden of any capital expenditures. And finally, there is a special provision on withdrawal that allows seven named member towns to consider withdrawal from the Regional District with no obligation for district debt incurred after December 10, 2015, so last December 10. They are still responsible for debt incurred while they were members, but just not any new debt incurred after December 10. And this becomes important, because I will explain in a minute.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Why now? It's really an important, the new agreement, having an amended agreement, is really important if the district is going to move forward. There have been years of disagreement among member towns about governance and assorted other issues, and the amendments are designed to address a lot of those concerns. It's not a perfect agreement, but it, the enemy of the good is the perfect, but it is, the hope is of all the, certainly the selectmen who put together the most recent proposed amendment, is that now we can have a more functional district and move forward with some very important projects, specifically the critical new building project. Another thing that is creating pressure on the district to move is that the Massachusetts State Building Authority reimbursement rate of 40 percent of eligible construction costs, or about $45 million of the projected $145 million cost for the new building, will expire June 30, 2016. And what this means is that Minuteman will drop off of the MSVA's list. They will be out of the running. There are many other schools and proposals in competition for a limited amount of funds, and if Minuteman wants to pursue a new building, they're going to have to go to the end of the line and start the process all over. And in addition, non-member communities are, there are some that are interested in pursuing membership in the district once it sort of cleans its house and clears out some of these things that have been obstacles to moving forward. So, Acton-specific information. The benefits to Acton, well, as I said before, there's weighted, modified weighted voting, so Acton would have a stronger voice on the school committee. It would reduce Acton's share of the capital costs via a formula, accounts for member town wealth. Acton actually, although it's very affluent, it is, there are some towns in the district that are, well, just really wealthy. So, Acton benefits with this adjustment in the calculation of capital contribution. And it really importantly would preserve the access of Acton residents to a very high-quality vocational technical school. There are waiting lists for quite a number of the schools that are sort of in competition with Minuteman. People don't talk about that very much, but it can be a problem if you can't, you can't get, you withdraw from the district, and then you can't find a home in another, in another school. The current enrollment includes 31 high school students, two post-graduates, and the junior high students who will participate in the Minuteman Middle School program. Pam, do you have anything else? But the funding, the funding for the junior high program, I did a presentation to the Finance Committee last night, and I was under the impression that it came out of the Acton Boxborough budget, but it doesn't. It comes, it's covered in our assessment that we pay to Minuteman, and there has been some discussion about what happens if Boxborough withdraws, because obviously their students are still going to be in the junior high, and they would presumably have to pay for their share of the cost of that middle school program. It's a very good program. It exposes students to all kinds of hands-on learning in the STEM fields, so anyhow, but that's a detail that obviously the town and the Minuteman and Boxborough are going to have to work out. Financial impact on Acton. With 16 member towns, which is the current status, the annual cost for Acton would be slightly lower than under the current regional agreement. If, worst-case scenario, the seven towns that are currently exploring withdrawal actually did follow through withdrawal, the annual cost would be slightly higher by about $50,000 a year. Now, I would add a caveat. There, this, this cost sort of contemplates that if seven towns withdrew, we would have to increase the number of non-member students to sort of compensate for it. The other thing is, is that, that, but the idea is that we wouldn't remain a nine-member town district forever. We're expecting to be able to recruit new members. The number of withdrawing towns will be known at the end of this month, I assume, and the other thing you need to know is that withdrawal of any member town won't be effective until July of 2017, assuming that the state approves the agreement by the end of this year. So, in the meantime, status quo is in effect until the new agreement becomes final, which is upon approval by the State Secretary of Education, and that is a date uncertain. Depends on when the secretary approves it, assuming that all of the district towns approve the amended agreement. Now, I stuck this in for the benefit of the Finance Committee, and because they like numbers, but this basically shows projections. It's based on a spreadsheet that the Minuteman Administration provided to all the member towns. It's on the town's website, along with a lot of other material, providing background information about the agreement, and to some extent about projections relating to the proposed building project. But this shows that with a 16-town, 16-town district under the current agreement, and the nine-town district, obviously, there's going to be some increase in both the operating and the debt obligation of Acton, but you look at the numbers in the right-hand column, and it's, it's not a huge amount, and that's where the $50 million comes in, the $50 million, the $50,000 that I mentioned earlier. Anyhow, but this, and these numbers are the ones that sort of contemplate a 628-student school, which is a drop in capacity from the current school, which I think has a capacity for 900 to 1,200 students, and it's far too large for the population that actually uses it. So, much smaller capacity, new school, and the numbers contemplate that of the 628, the majority would be from member towns, 104 or so would be coming from, out of the district. And if we reduce to a nine-town district, some more students will come from out of district, but basically the numbers from Acton's perspective, assuming that those things all come to pass, we have out-of-district students to, to replace the member town withdrawing students. The numbers don't change that much. Under the new agreement, with a 16-town district, the operating cost for Acton would go up a little bit, but the debt, the capital cost would drop. And again, the right-hand column number isn't, you know, substantially different from the other numbers. And finally, for a nine-town district under the new agreement, there's an increase from the 16-town district, but still, they're all sort of in the ballpark, the same range, so. And then, these are things that I pulled out, because I had some questions about what's the current enrollment, what's the enrollment trend, and the, the numbers are rather hard, the bars are rather hard to see, but the bar on the left is October 20, 2010, it's 617 enrollment, and the second bar is October 2011, 648. October 2012, 653. October 2013, the really longest, tallest bar, 716. And October 2014, 673. I don't have more recent information. It's possible Ed will have some, the superintendent, I'll be cordial, might have some that he could share with us after the presentation. Because I know that there are a number of students who have individual education plans, and that kind of education can generate more expense, I thought, this is district-wide data that I took from, I think, a Minuteman presentation of the budget for fiscal '16, so it's, it's a little bit old, but it just shows that of the total enrollment, a substantial, there's a substantial percentage of the students that are sort of qualified for sped services. And I had read that that was something that was noteworthy at Minuteman, and they actually are quite successful with those courses and services. And finally, this is, well, this is taken from our Acton leadership group's most recent spreadsheet, so we don't have any data before fiscal '15, which is why it's a very small chart, but it shows just a very short trend in the assessments. It is growing up, but it's always important, when you're looking at percentages, to always look at the base number. You know, it makes a difference if, if the percent is 200 percent and the base number is five, as opposed to 500,000, so. So, next steps. Okay. If the agreement is approved, by mid-March, and that's the latest date that we had, this came out of the breakfast meeting that was recently at Minuteman, by mid-March, the school committee is expected to recommend the financing proposal, which is also known as Module Five, for the new building project. And once the school committee makes a recommendation, as it did with the amendment of the regional agreement, the proposal comes back to the member towns, who have to schedule, either schedule a vote or respond to it. In this case, if member towns do nothing, it mean, it indicates their approval of the proposal. So, they have 60 days from the time the school committee makes a recommendation of the proposal to oppose. And the reason we're talking about mid-March is because some of the member towns have town meetings in May, and so this is an effort to make sure that you capture their town meeting schedules, so that they don't have to call a special town meeting if they have any, if they, well, they could oppose, they could also vote to support. If any member town rejects the financing proposal, then we'll go to a district-wide ballot vote. Basically, all of the member towns, I think it's on the same day, have to vote at the polls, and it's approved by the majority of all of, all of those votes, as opposed to unanimity. Finally, as I noted before, the withdrawing member towns remain in the Regional District until July 2017, but under the new regional agreement, they would have no obligation for any debt incurred after December 10, 2015. There, there were some questions among selectman representatives about whether you could bar the withdrawing towns from voting, doing anything with the proposed financing, given that it's not going to affect them if they're withdrawing, but I think legally, they're still going to be members until the agreement becomes effective, and, well, they'll be members until July 2017. So, you really can't preclude them from voting. But presumably, we would be able to have an arrangement whereby maybe they would vote to pass over, or they wouldn't schedule, put it on their, their warrant, or something If the agreement's not approved, this is a problem, and, and I think, I don't, I want to make sure that people understand it. The 16-member towns will continue to operate under the current agreement, with all the problems that have existed in the past several years. There, there could be more uncertainty about approval of the financing proposal for the new building, even under a district-wide ballot, because there were some towns that wanted the amendment to be, the amended agreement to be approved before they voted on the building project. They want to stay in the district, but they want the agreement amended. If the building project doesn't move forward, we lose the potential for 40 percent, 40 percent rate, state reimbursement of building costs, because that will expire on June 30 of 2016. And as I said, we fall off the list, we go to the end of the line, and the accreditation of the Regional District could be at risk. And finally, in lieu of the new building, the district is going to have to undertake major repairs. That will not only be more expensive, it'll be time-consuming, it'll take longer to renovate the building, and it will be disruptive of classrooms, because it will be going on while students are in class. So, summary of the, I'm getting my throat. Summary of some of the benefits to the district and to Acton. It strengthens the Regional District governance. It stabilizes the Regional District membership, which has been sort of, well, because we'll clear out some of the contentiousness. And then importantly, it clears a way for the Regional District to move forward with the building project. And in clearing out all of the issues that have existed among district members up to this town time, it will assist the district in drawing new members. As I mentioned before, there are potential members who have said they're, they'd be interested in pursuing membership once the district takes care of this amended agreement. And as I mentioned before, it assures that Acton students will have access to Minuteman. Finally, as you may have heard, it went, if you watched the Governor's State of the Commonwealth speech on January 21st, he announced that he, he will be proposing in his Governor's budget that there be an investment of, I think it was, what did you say, 85, 75 million, a chunk of money in vocational technical education. He is very positive about vocational technical education, which I think is great, and this is just a quote from, I extracted it from his speech. So, I think that the state is going to be stepping up, and this is a great opportunity for the town to, our town, to be part of that, so. Questions? And Al? No question? Very quiet.
I have some questions.
Yes, please. Mr. Ashton.
I'm postponing my vacation to the South, just so I can attend this town meeting and vote for this, because I think this is a great asset that we're able to tap into. But I do have a couple of questions about the regional agreement, having been through that same process about three years ago. As the, have you met with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and have they given you the proverbial wink and nod that they're okay with this agreement?
I'm just a superintendent, we'll answer that.
I mean, I know they can't actually approve it until all the community towns have approved it, but I know we met with them, and they gave us the wink and the nod, so.
Yeah, we've kept them informed all the way when you were involved in that first effort, and as we've revised it, we've been sending other revisions. And just to be sure, on Monday, I think it was, before the Arlington Special Town Meeting, where they did approve it, 178 to 5, Chris Lynch said, "Yep, we have no problems with the regional agreement. Now, go get it approved."
Great, great. The other question I have, and you touched on this, Jen, a little bit in your presentation, has to do with issuing of debt, because obviously that's the whole reason we're doing this, is because we want the ability to issue debt. And, and if you remember, in the Acton-Boxborough region agreement, there's very specific language that requires both towns to actually take a vote to approve the issuance of debt. Current draft of the, of this agreement does not include that language, and under the law, as you pointed out in your presentation, the member communities don't actually have to take a vote. If they don't vote, they essentially are approving it. Given the concern that was expressed by Finance Committee and the selectmen when we were doing this for the Acton-Boxborough agreement, I would assume, but I hope you will say at the special town meeting, that you will definitely require a town meeting vote on the issuance of debt, because I think that, that will allay some concern that some people might have, that they wouldn't get a say in that.
No, I, I, the Board of Selectmen in Acton has not had a discussion about this, but I know when we were talking about the whole issue of town meeting vote versus, just in lieu of, you know, a district-wide vote, I think that there was pretty strong support for the, well, the democratic process, even though, you know, the, the district-wide vote is also a democracy in a form, I think that, my guess is that my colleagues are going to be inclined to put it on the annual town meeting warrant, and, which is something I don't want to think about right now, because it's going to involve a lot of preparation. But, yeah, I, I think that, yeah, we will, it's likely to happen, the way our town.
I think you could, you could get someone up to say basically, "Well, if we approve this, and you're not willing to put that on the warrant, then this is our only chance to vote yea or nay on the capital costs," and that might be a little bit of a problem. That's all I'm suggesting.
And I, and I, and I think that, you know, in the intervening after special town meeting and before annual town meeting, I think that we're going to have more information, too. It's been all likelihood, and I think that it's always a good opportunity to educate the public about this, and, and it would be great if we could just have more people understanding Minuteman a little more for this process, so, yes, and.
Well, I visited Minuteman, the first time I visited Minuteman was in 1998, I think, when I first went on the Board of Selectmen. And I understand it hasn't changed much, which is mind-blowing.
Yeah, the gentleman behind you.
That's what I heard, yes.
My long-dyin apparent.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions?
There's a question on, because what I've been hearing above is, you know, where they built the Assabett Middle School. I don't know what that was, minus $7 million, $100 million, or something like that. Everyone's kind of saying, "Well, put that." Why is this $144 million? I could send my child here, it's costing less. So, what's the difference in cost from one?
Well, there's two, there, well, first of all, Assabett was a repair project. It was not new construction, nor was it a renovation, nor was it an addition. It was a very huge repair project. They didn't add any space, they didn't add any programs, they, it is what it's always been. It's just the internal mechanics have been replaced, windows, doors, some of the equipment in the kitchen, and the boiler, and chiller, and that sort of thing. The question you, you add, and the second part of your question was, has to do with the per pupil expenditures of why one vocational school is so different than another. And that begs the comparative analysis between Minuteman and, let's say, Assabett. What are the differences? What are the cost drivers at Minuteman that are not at Assabett? And there really are four major cost drivers. The first one is our transportation costs.
Right, yeah.
Our district is the largest square miles of any district east of Worcester, and perhaps east of Franklin County Tech, which is in Franklin County. Yeah, we're 40 miles across, 32 miles. Our per pupil transportation costs are just outrageous. We're looking at different ways to handle that. We're at the beginning of a three-year contract with our bus company. We're actually looking at breaking up the routes and bidding them to some companies, maybe that are in the western part of the district. We're looking at owning our own buses to try to get those costs down. So, transportation is a key cost driver, when you look at per pupil expenditures. The other one is our, the number of services we provide for students on IEP. We have the highest percentage of students receiving services of any school in the Commonwealth. Our salaries are high because of our location to Boston. When we hire folks from industry to teach our kids in the vocational technical areas, many times, these folks are making a very good salary out in the field. Our engineering and even our construction trades folks, if you've gotten a bill from your doctor and your plumber on the same day, you might not have noticed too much difference. So, we have to pay folks well to come and share their expertise with our students. That's another key cost driver. Certainly, the, you know, people complain, and rightly so, about the issues around non-resident tuition when it comes to capital costs, because previous to now, there was no regulation that they had to participate in that. And as you recall from the, the last go-round with the regional agreement, that was, wasn't the elephant in the room, it was the unleashed tiger in the room, and we all had to deal with it. Well, we've dealt with it, and now the state has a regulation that those folks will contribute. But when you look at the operating side, and as our number of out-of-district students has gone down. Well, we've dealt with it, and now the state has a regulation that those folks will contribute. But when you look at the operating side, and as our number of out-of-district students has gone down, which is what, you know, I don't know if it's what people wanted, but it's what's happening because of the decisions that have been made, that revenue is increasing assessments. So that's an aspect of why our per pupil costs are high. And when you look at the Department of Ed website, a big reason our costs are higher is they don't count all the students we serve. Janet mentioned the middle school program, but we have to count that as a cost. But we don't count the students to divide that number out. That gets added on to our high school costs, and that's another half a million dollars that Asavet doesn't do, Neshoba doesn't do, Blue Hills, Keith Tech does not do that. Also, we have a very robust and popular community education program. We serve over 3,000 adults and kids through summer school and evening classes over a year. There's several hundred thousand dollars of overhead costs that are part of our district expenditures that are not, we can't count the thousands of people that come and take classes. So there are things that we provide as a service to the community, including our postgraduate programs, including the middle school program. All these services that Minuteman has been providing for member towns and non-member town citizens for 30 years, we believe are important and part of our mission, and it's expensive. But I do have to, there's a couple of things that you ought to know. One is that over the last 10 years, Minuteman's assessment to the member towns has averaged on an annual basis 1.13%. That's been our 10-year average increase. So we've, since I've been on board, and this is my 10th budget that I've been submitting, we've been working very hard to right-size the building, to get our costs in line with what our district spends. There's another measure that we call net school spending, and how much you spend above the net school spending amount. 10 years ago, Minuteman was about the third-highest of all of our town's, we're about spending 165%. In other words, we were spending 65% more than the state said is enough to spend on a vocational student. Now we're about 140%, while the rest of the schools in our district are averaging about 152%. So by intelligent measures, when you look at Minuteman, yes, we are expensive, but we're not as expensive as people tend to say we are. And as we get to a new building, our operating costs and our projections are down almost $2 million, because we have a more efficient building that's built for the educational program plan that's been approved by the MSBA. We're right-sizing the staff gently as we move towards that number of 628 kids. We haven't had to actively lay off a single person, but we're closing a couple of programs, we're merging a couple of programs, we're starting two new ones. And so during this transition time, our operating expenses are going to be a little bit higher, because every kid that started in marketing three years ago is going to finish in marketing. Every student that started in HVAC is going to finish in HVAC. We are, and we are obligated to provide them an education for four years, even though we're not taking any new kids in there. So you can imagine the student-teacher ratios get a little off. You know, we're transitioning to a new Minuteman that's going to be here for 50 years, in an unbelievably beautiful school. And Charlie Baker is right, you know, there is much more interest in vocational technical education now than there was just five years ago. Our application rate from Acton has doubled from last year. We have 16 eighth graders have applied as of today, and we still hold applications open for another month. You know, times four, that's 60, 65 kids, that's double what you're sending right now. So Acton thinking about leaving the district, I'm welcome the idea of helping folks look at what vocational technical is, how it serves our kids, and what's the best deal. But I've got to stand up and be a voice for these kids having access in the future, because all those other schools are going to get full, they're already getting full. They're not building a lot of new ones. That was a long answer.
Great answer, you're well spoken.
Now I have fuel to say, "What's the difference?" What are you getting?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Big, great question. Yes, sir.
I'm just doing what I was thought of, by the way. I have a, I have a few questions, I'm just trying to figure out how I can spread them out here. When the vote comes up, 16 communities, does it have to be unanimous? Every town has to vote yes?
For the regional agreement, yes.
Oh, I'm talking about, oh, you're talking about for how many schools you signed, what you're paying for?
There's three, well, there could be three. There are two votes coming up at town meeting, at Acton Town Meeting. The one coming up next week is for the regional agreement. All 16 towns have to say yes, and they've all scheduled a special town meeting.
Yes.
I have 15 over the next 25 days. Once we get through that and we get a new agreement, then when the regular town meeting comes, and we go 16D, which is to make sure that it goes through all 16 town meetings, then all 16 would have to vote yes that way, too.
Now, does every town, like Acton's been, provide, whether we send one or 10, correct?
Well, we're, you can probably answer it, I should just let you stand here and answer your questions. So, no, you're doing a fine job, but, no, we pay, we always have more than five, we pay for the students that are enrolled. And the issue with the minimum enrollment requirement is with regard to small enrollment towns, so town like, I think Dover or Weston, you know, if they have one student enrolled, historically, they've had to pay as if they had five students enrolled.
Right, but I'm saying, is Acton doing that now?
Acton is under the agreement that if they were sending one, they would have to pay five when it came to the capital cost, yeah.
But it's probably not going to happen, given the trend of enrollment in Acton.
Right, so the whole thing is, they're trying to reduce the cost, if we're sending one person, we want to pay for one person.
Exactly.
That's what the whole vote is coming to approve.
And that's what, the nice things about these, that the Selectmen worked very hard on, was to come up with these nuances to the changes we asked for earlier, is that you can say in a small town, "You're only going to pay for the kids that you send."
Right.
And I understand that.
Does any town pay any more than any other town, right now?
Yeah, I'll answer that.
Yeah, please.
The answer, the simple answer is yes, but do they pay a lot more or a lot less?
Is it because of outside the district?
No, if we talk about the 16 towns that are in the district?
Yeah.
They pay a little bit different from town to town for really two reasons. One, how many kids do they have, and two, how wealthy is the town? Because the wealth drives another factor that the state figures out that says, "The town of Acton has to pay this minimum," and that minimum, we don't have anything to do with it. Every town, every year, on something called the cherry sheet, goes to the town finance people, and they see how much they have to spend on their schools. And they have a column for Acton-Boxer Regional, and then they have a column for Minuteman, and it says there, "You will spend a minimum of this for Minuteman." And so that amount of money comes to Minuteman, and then we use that, and so that amount is different. So in Weston, it's a lot lower per pupil than it might be in Acton. I'm sorry, it's a lot higher.
That's higher.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not easy to kind of figure out. And every year, when I go to all the town meetings, and people ask, you know, "Why is our per pupil expenditure so different than X-town or Y-town?" And it's, it's not a simple formula, you know, you're sending, like, if you're a non-member town, if you're from out of the district, it is a simple formula. The commissioner sets a tuition rate, it's $18,300. That's just for the operating expense. And then that town, let's say it's Medford, they're paying $18,300 a kid, plus they're paying transportation, and if the student is on an IEP, they're paying another $4,000 to $5,000, depending on the level of services. And then in a couple of years, when we have the new building, they'll be paying another $8,000 a kid for contributing to the new building, so you're up around $35,000, $40,000. That's why when Janet says, "Other towns may look at joining," Acton's not going to be paying that amount per pupil.
Right, well, it's the more the merrier, it's, it must go down.
Right, right. I mean, I'm very, very optimistic about towns taking a really good look at the district once we have a new regional agreement, and maybe we'll be a little smaller, I don't think we'll be nine, I think we'll probably be 11 or 12. And then we'll add a couple of other towns, and unfortunately, at that point, there won't be any room for out-of-district kids, so, that's the trend.
It's hard to decide who to let in. Obviously, it depends on who wants to come in. Well, I heard you mention Everett.
Yeah.
I mean, why would anybody want to come all the way from Everett? Is there nothing?
You know, it's not that far.
Well, I mean, I grew up in Arlington, so I know how far Everett is.
Yeah, well, you know, it's not that far then. You know, 35, 40 minutes to Minuteman.
Well, if I was a high school kid on the bus, that's far for me.
Yeah, well, our Lancaster kids come that far.
Well, what's the advantage to having somebody come from the glorious city of Everett? There's going to be advantage in Minuteman.
Because I was talking to a friend of mine at work today, and he's in Dunbar, he says, "A lot of people that are in the city don't want their kids to go to the city, they want them into the suburbs to learn trade." And I get, you get the same aspect academically and vocational.
And get them out of the city.
Exactly, that's what he was telling me today, and it made perfect sense.
Well, Everett's also dealing with a large construction project, as you may be aware of, and they have no vocational education in Everett anymore, at all, and they're not members of any regional vocational school.
Yeah.
And they have to, no, they don't have to, but, you know, WIN and Everett have an understanding that WIN will invest in the workforce development, and as they're hiring people for construction and jobs, they're going to favor people from Everett. And so the mayor is looking at, "How am I going to train people and get them ready for those kinds of jobs?" You know, they're not, they're not dealers, I mean, you got to run buildings, and, so we're, we're being viewed as an opportunity for Everett, and they're getting a lot of money from the, from the WIN folks to, to fund some of this, so, and I'm not worried about any, any kid from any place in Massachusetts coming to Minuteman. The diversity in our school is something unbelievable. We have an admissions policy, as every vocational school does, which is based upon a student's grades, attendance, discipline, interview, and a recommendation from someone at their school. I see it as a great opportunity. Watertown sends us 65 kids now. They have for many, many years. They're not a member of any vocational district, they don't offer any vocational programs.
It's closer than Everett.
Much closer.
So what about, what about the transportation costs from Everett?
It's not going to be very much, it's close. I mean, our transportation costs in general, we got to look at, but...
Well, again, it's just what this gentleman said, you know, it's interesting, because it isn't going to affect me personally, I mean, my hot brother raised his kids in Everett, but people don't send their kids to school in places like this because they want them to be going to school with kids from there.
You know, there's some of that, sure.
So, I mean, that's, that's why I only thought, so again, as you play this all out to the town meetings and stuff, people think something like that's going to go on down the road, I just don't know. But I guess my real question is, Arlington, where I'm from, has an elected town meeting, Acton does not, is that correct?
It's an open town meeting.
So when you have something like this happen, isn't there always the chance that all the people, because as you see the amount of people that showed up in the information session, isn't the chance that only the naysayers are going to show up and say nay?
Sure.
I mean, I got here because I have a daughter that's special ed, that's the email I got to be here, and I don't see any of them here, other than me. So, you know, it just, what if everybody that shows up are the ones that say no? I mean, that's out of your control, right?
Well, I have approval from the Office of Campaign Finance and the State Ethics Board to advocate for a position on this warrant art. In Acton, they'll be getting a card, every house will be getting a card in the next couple of days, letting them know when the town meeting is. I want to make sure, first of all, you all have a quorum, that's the most important thing. And then I have a link, I advocate for the new regional agreement, and I say a few sentences why. We have a link to our website, we have three very powerful videos on the website. In addition, we're working tomorrow and Friday on some additional mailings that we're going to do to every household. We're also contacting all the families from Acton that are at Minuteman now, to make sure they know about it. We're trying to light a little social network fire with our students. So we're looking at it as a campaign within the framework that I have to behave in, and because I'm the superintendent, I'm the CEO, I have a lot more freedom than my teachers do, than my school committee does, and so I'm going to exercise that, that right to make sure that people who come to the meeting understand what they're voting on as best they can, hear the discussion, and then vote for the, for our children.
Yeah, because I, I've not been active in, but I have been to a couple of town meetings here at Acton, and it was just, I just thought it was wild. I mean, again, you know, you, my mother's been a town meeting member in Arlington for 100 years.
Is she still?
Um, yes, she is.
God bless her.
But she's not, she's...
She must have voted for me, Monday night.
Well, she didn't, she's actually in rehab right now, but she would have voted for her. But the thing is, it's like, you know, even then, now, you have people voting for you, they're unnecessarily really voting for what you want, but that idea of just a bunch of people showing up down the high school auditorium and saying yea and nay just baffled me, because I never encountered it before. Well, I know it is more traditional.
Yeah, 12 of our 16 towns are open meeting, four are representative town meeting, so we have a little bit different cards going to all those folks. And the quorums are wildly different. Dover, they need 175. Acton, I think you need 100, or you don't have one?
No, we don't have, we don't have a quorum.
We have two people. Moderator and one other.
All right, so, when you guys get in, we're going to lock the doors. Do some fire thing, right?
It's a crazy thing, I worked for the town of Coggin, very wealthy town, and when they have town meetings, we have, they have to have a fire detail there.
Yeah.
Now, five years ago, I wasn't working it, but we were in the station and we were watching it, there was an argument, two amendments that were under card, one was to bring on street lighting. They turned them off to save money, and they said, "If you want to use streetlights, turn back on, it's going to cost the household $17 per house to turn the streetlights back on." And the other that was on the warrant was to vote for a $2 million ladder truck that the fire department needed for servicing the town. Now, which discussion do you think took longer to talk about that night? Seriously. The streetlights took four hours, and voting for a ladder truck, because we had three representatives there, that they had any questions about why do we need this, why do we need that, this and that, it went up the vote, and it passed within two minutes, and they argued about a streetlight for three hours.
Good thing you didn't argue about the niche law.
Well, they've done that, too, in Coggin, that's why they don't have bottled water there.
We've done that, too. Any other questions about the regional agreement?
All right.
Thanks so much for doing this.
Thank you very much, all of you for coming, and see you at special town meeting on February 2nd, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and Pam.
Thank you, everyone.